I've started the recording. We have four board members present. Paul Rice-Lager, Dave Schultz, Mark Wolford, John Veronica. Oh, we have five members. Sorry, John, that's you, right? Veronica. And then Katie Nelson's here. Okay, so we have a quorum?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so since we have a quorum, we'll call the zoning board of appeals to order at 5:01. And at this time, we'll review the meeting minutes from the last meeting. Have all the members had an opportunity to review them? And do you have any comments? I was not at the last meeting, so I have no comments.
There was one misspelled word, but I can't remember where it was here. It didn't have any bearing on it.
All right, I will look for a misspellings.
Are there any other comments?
I make a motion to accept the meetings from our la- or the minutes from our last meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
All right. Who seconded?
John.
John, okay.
I believe Mark made the motion to approve. So the motion carries. And Mark, are there any other items that you would like to cover? Before we go into the meeting?
No, I think that's we have what we need there.
Okay.
Mark, can you, can I, do you need me on it? Am I, so, okay, I'll stay on. Very good, thanks.
So then, at this point, if there's no other business from staff, Mark or Daphne, could you please read the agenda?
We're gonna see. So the first item before you is a variance request for 7,002 Park Circle, request for street side setback variance. The owners who are present, it says Jane Rassellson, but she's joined by Roy, I presume, are requesting a zoning variance to construct a one-story addition consisting of a bathroom, bedroom and laundry room on the south side of their residence. The addition would be located 16 feet, including the two-foot overhang from the street sidewalk line shared with Park Circle. Normally, our ordinance requires a 20-foot minimum street side setback, so this is a reduction of four feet. We received statements in support from three individuals, Andrew Rollick of 7,006 Park Circle, Jeff Martin, Jeff and Jan Martin of 7,009 Park Circle, and Charles Myers, who did not indicate his address, but he apparently must live on Century Avenue, I'm guessing, based on his description and of how his property, about their property. So that's all I have to report.
And then the second agenda item?
Oh, you're having me review the agenda?
Or yeah, I'm just kind of following the list.
Okay, and then the other item will be 4916 Borchers Beach Road, request for variance for setback from Class D Highway, and that's one that you've had before. It does not have a hearing because you've held that hearing at a previous meeting.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, if there's any, anyone else on the call that is here for public comment, there will be an opportunity for you to comment in the public portion of the, of the meeting this evening. So at this point, I'd like to open the, the public hearing for the first agenda item at 5:05. And then, Mark, you, you read the application.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I read the application and and also reported, I'll put the three statements that we received, I'll just record them here as part of the here.
Sure, sure.
Sorry about the procedure.
No problem. Are, are there any other comments that you have from city staff?
No, I, I went out and looked at the property and it's very straightforward. I don't have any any comments to report.
Okay, and now, if there's any representatives here to speak on behalf of the first agenda item, please state your name and you'll be able to present your, your variance request.
That's for you.
Let me help them. Let me help them here. You guys are muted just a moment.
Oh, yep.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay. There you go.
All right. I don't know that there's anything that we're supposed to say, except that we're hoping that we can put this addition on, just make it easier because we have stairs up and down every part of our house, and it's getting tougher and tougher to do, to maneuver those. So this would help. We also have friends and relatives that are having difficulty getting upstairs or downstairs to our bathrooms. So that, that's the main reason for this. We don't think that it's going to interfere with the looks of the neighborhood. In fact, we think our house will be just, if not more attractive with the addition in front of the garage. The addition will go over where those bushes are on the right side there where that garage window is. It'll come out.
Right to the, right to the right of that, that large tree?
Right, and well, right, right, that tree will have to come out, pine tree that's next to the house. Our air conditioner is there, and there will be a bay window where that, when, you know, in the addition that, so instead of looking at that, it'll be coming out 11 feet. And then the wall will come out 11 feet, and then there'll be a bay window where that window is. Basically. And that's looking, looking from Park Street into our circle. And I guess you can, the addition will come out approximately to that edge of that corner bush there right now. Right there, yeah. The bush sticks out about 12 feet from the corner of the house.
Do any board members have any questions?
Okay, I have any questions. I did go to the site and look at it, and, and quite honestly, you know, this is in a cul-de-sac, and where they're doing the addition is not even the front of their house. The front of their house that you were looking at there, and, and the 81 feet is, is actually facing the cul-de-sac, so you know, this is not like adding on to the front of the house. To me, it looked like it would not even be obtrusive to entering the cul-de-sac, so. So they're looking for a
Four-foot variance.
Four-foot variance, and actually, that's measured to a two-foot overhang.
Basically, we wanted to come out 10 feet from our, and then we found out that the overhang of two feet, which would match the rest of the house, would put us over. And so basically, and we were intending to push into the garage about a foot, so we thought if we could come out 11 feet instead of 10, and then the overhang is that extra two feet, the extra for, it is just because the sidewalk is about three inches closer than it was when we built our house and, and measured from the lot line. So, so that extra three, an extra foot is not something we're doing, really. It's just that it's already kind of three inches too close.
Okay.
I think we're good to go on.
Okay, Mark, was there any other, any city comments?
No.
Okay.
It was very straightforward.
Yeah, I think so. So at this point, I'd like to close the public portion of the meeting at 5:10, and then we can deliberate as a, as the zoning board.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your time and work.
Thank you.
I think I tend to agree with Mark. I think this is not even the front of the house, and it doesn't seem too obtrusive, and I think, you know, the hardship certainly, as they laid out in their their application letter, was the Asian place.
Yes.
And accessibility is an issue for them within the, and I know these split level houses as well, so.
And they don't really have any other viable options for adding on to that level.
No, in the back, they would cover up the dining room.
Right. Yeah, yeah. And quite honestly, there, it actually seemed like there was too much lawn between park where you pull in and where the proposed addition is going to go, it was just all, all grass, you know, I mean, basically, the shape of the lot has kind of really made this a pretty easy decision to me.
Oh, that's the best reason. I'll motion we approve it.
Well, that was John. Okay, is there, is there any other comment from board members? Okay, with that, John motioned, and Mark, I believe, made a second, all in favor?
And, and just to clarify, the basis, the hardship arguments that I heard were accessibility, no other viable option for adding, putting in addition to the house.
Right, right, because they don't, and also, they mentioned that they don't have a bathroom on that level of the house as well, so yeah, accessibility is an issue, and location of property for orientation of the house.
That's your covering.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for presenting. Okay, so we will move on to the second item on our agenda. Then I'd like to open this portion of the public meeting at 5:13.
It's not a hearing again, remember, but you, I'm sorry, have the option to invite comments from the applicant.
Right, that's right. Thanks for reminding me that, Mark. So I believe, Mr. Levy, you're here. I think I saw you on the, on the meeting, so if you would, please go through your, your request again, please, or what you'd like to share with us.
Oh, sure. Thank you. First of all, I apologize for missing the last meeting. I had the time messed up, and I respect your time, and I'm sorry about that. What I'm trying to do again is to replace a home that's old and has been there since mid-sixties with a modest single-story home and maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. And there are very tall pine trees that prevent me from putting the home where I would normally want to put the home, which is to have sort of a centering from the road on one side and the other road on the other side. It's a house with roads on both sides. And without the variance, the home and maintaining of the pine trees, the home has to be positioned, frankly, in a position that's, you know, if, if we're looking for hardships, it leaves a backyard that, you know, basically walks out onto a street, and so it's something that I'm very uncomfortable doing, and, and I think I said before, I won't do because I won't cut the trees down, and I won't put a home that's aesthetically bad for the neighborhood and leaves no backyard. And I, I also want to just clarify, because the last time, I think there was some comments about all of the letters, you know, being form letters, and that was just a function of me sitting down with all those neighbors. I actually sat down with nine different, and all nine supported, I don't have the ninth one here. But I took them through the plans and what the intention was, and there was you know, a lot of support, and I wanted to respect their time, and so I filled out a form and said you were welcome to fill out a form on your own, or you could sign this one, and they all were comfortable signing that one. That's why they all look the same. They understood the stake that they have in it, and so, you know, my request is, is to provide for a variance that preserves the trees, provides a backyard that's not as close to the street, maintains the integrity of the neighborhood, and is in favor by the town of Westport, and the Middleton, Westport Joint Zoning Committee, as well as eight neighbors, plus a ninth one, who inquired unsolicited that they wanted to lend their support. So that, that's kind of where we're at.
So do we have a final site plan showing where your final decision is, or where you would want to?
Yes, it's, it's that one right there.
Then I believe this location that puts it at 51 feet from the right-of-way?
That's correct. It'll, it'll put it, no, not the right, it'll put it 51 feet from the pavement on the
Edge of the pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, you know, it's, it's quite a long ways away, and I, you know, and again, I know that one of the comments was, you know, well, you know, it's new and you can place it where you want. I understand that, and I can respect and appreciate that. The problem is if you try to preserve the trees and place it within the parameters, you're, you're, you're very close to Simon Trail, because the right-of-ways are different from the two things, and you basically are walking out into a street. And it just didn't make any sense to me.
Steve, can you, I drove by there today, and I actually took some pictures. Can you explain what you mean by the integrity or the continuity of the neighborhood? To me, this was
Right, correct. So, so the, so, if, if you can go to the next slide, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. That one right there on the right side, number four, puts the house where it would need to be to preserve the trees, and you see it's very close to Simon Trail, so when you're driving up, there's a home that's been basically centered there for, you know, 50 years plus, and 50 years, I'm sorry. And, you know, if you move this over, you've got a, a sort of a lopsided look on this area, and, you know, the area includes grass and trees and landscaping, and there are trees behind that, and those would all have to come down, so you're taking, and I don't even mention those, and I think if you were there, you saw the trees in the back, yeah, right, right where that arrow is, yeah. Those have to come down. They wouldn't come down with the variance. The pine trees, you know, would remain, so the integrity of the neighborhood, and there, you know, there are one, two, three, you know, four homes that are sort of facing out on the backside. You know, they would be worse off by having to take down those back trees. You know, that's kind of, that's the, what I'm talking from that standpoint. And I'm sorry, as long as they have it up on number three, you know, that's, that's where, you know, I would put it if I was indifferent to the pine trees, so that you see there, at least you have a backyard that you can step out to that isn't right, you know, right next to the road. But I don't want to take those trees down, and I said before, I, you know, I wouldn't do that. It's, there's too many homes that, you know, that have, you know, a nice view of those trees, and there, if you were out there, Mark, you see those trees, you know, they're really, they're really quite nice, the three giant pines.
Can you scroll to the site plan, Daphne, please, or Mark, whoever? That's the proposed one. So I have to ask you, Mr. Levy, have you ever considered pivoting the building on the garage to sort of swing it up, you know, to the, well, in this, to the west, like northwest? You know, so then the house would not be necessarily parallel to Borchers Beach Road?
So, if, if you turn it the counterclockwise?
Exactly.
Yeah, then, then you'd have the entire home basically on Simon Trail, and that's just not, you know, it's just not, it makes no sense. You, you know, I, I'm not saying that no one has it, but you, you basically are walking out of your, your backyard is on a street. And, you know, I don't know who would, 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 would want or think that it's safe to have your backyard on the street.
Yeah, I don't know. I have to disagree with that. I have a picture here. You have a huge amount of yard between you and Simon. And when you talk about walking out onto the street, I don't know if we can see this. There you go.
Well, I have a satellite.
Well, here's a picture in real, real time. There is there is all the room that we have that you have between the back of your existing house and Simon Trail.
Yeah, well, that, I would appreciate that room, but that's, you're not letting me build the house there. I mean, that, that's all I want to do is build the house where the house has existed for the last 50 years. So what you're showing me is where I want to build the house. And I agree with you. That's acceptable.
Do we have a aerial photo again? Because this is also a little deceptive. Because the setback to Simon Trail is actually more than because there's no sidewalk there. So we mentioned earlier in a previous meeting that if you move the proposed house back approximately, we are thinking about four feet further back from Borchers Beach Road, that you would be within the required setbacks, and you wouldn't even need a variance. Is that four feet? That much of a problem for you?
So I, I don't think it's four feet. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, in order to do it, I need to move it 10 feet further, and, and because of the angle there, you know, it, it's not that it's, it, it cuts more of the backyard, because you're not going one for one there, and so I did stake out where it needs to be to, to fit in here. And it's it just doesn't, it just makes for, you know, just not a, a proper placement that, you know, that I feel is both aesthetic or, you know, or safe from a backyard standpoint. And again, my, the request is, you know, we've got 51 feet from a road that I think everyone's agreed is, is not going to change in, you know, 100 years. So.
Against a question that I have, and I'm not an architect, but I remember that we had made the request that Mark was talking about. But I don't think we've ever seen a drawing that shows a repositioning of that garage based on Mark's input. I mean, we're just hearing verbiage about it, but we, we don't have a diagram that says, we don't have a diagram that shows us that, well, based on what you're asking, this is what it would look like compared to this. Doesn't strike me, okay, that you've really taken consideration of what we had requested from the first meeting. I may be wrong, but that's what I'm thinking. Well, I agree. Looking at the same, we're looking at the same drawings. Am I right? Are we looking, we're looking at the same drawings? That's what it looks like to me. Yeah. Paul, you're the one that suggested moving the garage, the, the new garage back, and it looks like they might have done that on this, but they did not.
I think you did.
They didn't move the house. We were talking about the entire house.
Yeah, and my, my point was, is I did that, I staked it out, and the house is too close to the street, and it's, it's too, it's too off-centered, and, and, and that's, that's the problem. And the problem is, you know, is, is a function of the tree, the pine trees there, that you're not able to push the house back. If you could push the house back all the way, you know, you'd have all the room you needed. Because you see at the back there, I mean, the, the setback line, you know, on the side is 35 feet. Yeah, and that's, you know, that's quite a lot of room if you could push it back, but you can't push it back without taking down those pine trees. And that's what I was trying to avoid, and that was the purpose of, of getting this in the first place.
Do you have to take down all three of those pine trees?
You know, I looked at that, and you probably have to take the two, the, the two closest to the house, and the problem with that, because we went under and we looked, the the branches, you know, of the, of the one, the closer one, go into the, into that third one. So if you take down, you take, you take down one of the, the closest tree, you sort of have half a pine tree on the other side. I mean, I try, you know, I tried, I, I've tried very hard to try to make it fit and work while, you know, keeping within, you know, some, some desirabilities for both the neighborhood, the backyard size and whatnot, and, and, you know, this is, you know, and I've state, state them out where they've been to see, and it's just, you know, without the, you know, without the variance, I'm not able to build the house. It's not, and that's not your guys' problem, but I'm just letting you know, it's just not a matter of, you know, preference, or, you know, or, or something along those lines. It's a matter of it, it doesn't work with, you know, with that lot with those trees there. And again, that home that was there, and that, you know, that home starts there where that, the yellow and the black is, and, you know, it's, so I, I am pushing even the home further back into the lot from the end there. You know, the, the, all, all of the landscaping is all been designed around where that house is, has existed. And because of the highway right-of-way, it is, it's tremendously far from Borchers Beach Road. 51 feet setback is, you know, it's quite a setback. Which is why I think all the neighbors were in favor of it when I spoke to them and sort of explained what was going on. So, you know, they, you know, they get a more modern home, they get to keep the, the landscaping that's existed there. And, you know, and so that's why I feel everybody's better off, and the hardship is, you know, the, the shape of the lot, the, you know, the, the fact that there's mature trees there, the fact that the home sat where I'm trying to place it, and the fact that you've got a street on both sides of a, of a pie-shaped lot.
So we're, we're, we're having trouble here, Steve, is, is really determining whether there actually is a hardship, or if it's just something you've created. Well, because we do, you know, our job is to, is to enforce the zoning code. And the zoning code is, is in black and white.
Sure.
And it requires a hardship.
So, so the hardship that I then I'll put forth is the fact that in order to save the mature pine trees, the home has to be the whole, the home has to be the whole, the home has to be placed forward enough that it's too close to the street to have a backyard with grandkids coming over and running out in the backyard into a street. And the way to avoid that is to push the home back and cut down the pine trees, which, you know, I'm basically telling the, you know, you folks that are just not going to do. But that would be the solution.
So as I look at the proposed house on this site plan, it's actually further away from Simon Trail than your existing rear of your existing house. I mean, my, I really have to disagree with the fact that you keep saying you're going to walk right out onto Simon Trail.
This home, this is, yeah, but this home is what I would like. Yeah. If I move it within the setbacks, it's not that that's that's not the case. I mean, you already see that the backyard of the proposed house is closer to Simon Road than the backyard, because that home is basically a straight home that's there. And then this home needs to be moved in order to fit it within, so it gets even closer.
Then you have a bigger front yard. Yeah, well, I guess, you know, just kind of echoing what John had said, you know, there really wasn't an exhibit showing, you know, if you move that house back so that it fits within that setback. You know, this in a sense is is what we had seen before.
Mark Opitz, how far is their lot line adjacent to Simon Trail from the actual edge of the pavement? We had that, I thought, on an original, one of the original site plans.
Um.
In other words, this is deceptive. If that looks like Simon Trail is right there.
I'm going to measure it. I'll measure it in DCI map.
So you got an additional 22 feet to the edge of the pavement from that lot line. Okay. What we needed to know.
Oh, you got the answer. Okay.
See what I'm saying right there? We have Simon Trail, and then we've got it drawn in in yellow.
Yep.
And it's saying from the lot line that edge of that pavement is 22 feet. Okay.
Can we see the site plan again, Daphne? Okay, so there's an additional 22 feet from that lot line out to the curb. Yep.
I call you back. I'm in a meeting right now. Yeah, see, okay. Well, I've got all the information I need.
Do we as a as a board have more questions for Mr. Levy? Mark, you.
I think, Mr. Levy, that if you had your builder actually play around with the location of that house and then actually measure where it would be from the road, that that it's really to me, not that much of an issue. It's not even close.
You know, I I just, I just don't see it that way. And you know, I don't.
Here, here, let me just say this. Looking at this, the proposed house, the corner that's adjacent to that marker that says 20 feet
Yeah.
from Simon Road, it looks like you're a good another 20 feet to the edge of the house plus 22 feet to the edge of the pavement. So you're 62 feet from the pavement. If you move that four feet back approximately.
Be 56.
Yeah, I mean, you're.
Well, you have to move the house back more more than four feet.
Well, I don't know. One of the early ones we had, it seemed like that was.
That house has got to be, it's got to be moved over, you know, 12 feet.
Right, but at the narrowest part, you'd still have over 40 feet.
Let's put it this way, even if you moved it all the way to this 20 foot setback, you'd be 42 feet from the from the road. And obviously, we're not asking you to do that.
No.
Hey, believe me, we want you to build this house. We just want you to go by the rules.
No, I understand that, but I guess the the problem that I have is, is I, I mean, I don't know, you know, I sit in these sessions, I see, you know, and I see things being allowed to be built, you know, 90 feet from the same street with neighbors who are against it. And, you know, and here we've got, you know, everybody saying this makes the most sense. This is aesthetically the best for the neighborhood. It preserves the trees. And it leaves 51 feet from the road so that there's nothing that's that's being disrupted by it. And and, you know, and yet, you know, we can't see that the hardship is at the pine trees there. I would place, I mean, I had one of the dry, I placed the the house back there. So you've got some backyard. I mean, to have to put the house, you know, where you essentially have no backyard on the Sam Simon Trail is, you know, is it just, it makes no sense. And so I guess, you know, I I just don't understand why with so many folks in support of this. It's something, you know, and being, you know, where the house has existed, pushed in even further on into the lot. I mean, this is, you know, it's it's not like, I mean, the driveway, it would be that much longer if you if you have to do it, not that that it's a financial issue, but there's there's even more of an aesthetic issue. Because if we push it 10 feet back or 14 feet back, there's that much more driveway because you enter the home off of Borchers Beach Road. So I mean, even that aesthetic is, you know, is a bad aesthetic.
Well, for the board, I think I can address two of those things. Number one, it doesn't matter how many of your neighbors say everything's fine. We still have a code. We still have a code. And I think you had referred to a variance that we granted on Borchers Beach Road just recently for a garage
Right.
overhang, and their hardship was very very viable. They had a 18 foot drop where that garage went. Well, tell her they went to the house. There was no place they could have put that on the lot other than there. So, you know, that's the true definition of hardship. I hope you understand.
Just the folks who were just on, they wanted an extra bedroom and the bathroom and you know, and they're putting it close to the, you know, closer to lot line than I'm talking about.
They have an existing house that they were adding on.
There's an existing house there.
You're creating a whole new house.
Yeah.
Well, that 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 was a different application. We're looking at you know, your 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 variance request.
Mr. Levy, the people that are supporting your application, how supportive would they be if you were going to be cutting down those pine trees in order to situate your house the way you'd like?
They'd not be supportive at all. They'd probably run me out of the neighborhood. That's the whole point of it. But I would be just fine because I'd be in the middle of the lot and have all the room on both sides of me that I need. But as I said.
The difficulty we're having as the board is we see the lot, the setback lots, we understand you want to keep the trees. And to our point is, if you just push that house back 10 or 12 feet, you'd be within the setbacks, and you'd still have a backyard, although not as large as you may like. It's still a backyard and you'd fit within.
There's a safety issue with that. And if, you know.
In what sense?
You're walking, you're walking out of a house and you're and you're on you're on a street, you come right up to the street. That's not that's not, that's that's no one's interest.
Mr. Levy, this is Katie Nelson. I have just a couple of questions. Have you talked with the builder to see how closely they could get to the trees without damaging them?
Yes, thank you. I have asked. And in fact, one of the things that we did is, you know, we're we're buttoning up right up against the trees. And if they continue to, you know, where I'm requesting, and if they continue to grow, if they do, you know, I have to trim those branches, but you know, they were a little concerned about the roots. And so, you know, we left, I mean, we left, you know, two feet, basically.
Have you done a I I don't want to seem callous about trees because I love trees, and I think they're super important. Have you done a cost analysis of buying one or two mature pine trees, getting them nice and big and put in after your house was built?
Yeah, no, I didn't think about that. And cost is not an issue to me, just just from that standpoint. But, you know, you're not going to buy 60 foot pine trees anywhere, but.
I mean, I think you can, but I, yeah, I haven't looked myself.
They don't have to be, they don't have to be 60 feet. They could be 30 feet and they grow.
Yeah.
I would appreciate, Ben, I would appreciate a vote.
Well, I I have one more question for you, if you don't mind. Are you restricted as far as fences in your neighborhood?
I'm not, no, there's no. It's an old an old street with a lot of old.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of know your area. Um, and so I'm just curious if that would be a solution for you for your grandchildren.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I thank you for that. I think, you know, again, putting, you know, you know, Mark, you saw the property, there's, you know, a bunch of houses in the property, there's a bunch of houses. And I guess, having lived on that street, I live across the street. We bought this because the soakers passed away. My wife can't go upstairs, so I wanted to build a single family unit in the same neighborhood. So, you know, I know all the neighbors and I just, I, you know, I'm not going to go aesthetics that existed in the in this neighborhood. And so, you know, that's why I did it. You know, that would solve the problem. Sure, you had a, if you had a fence back there, but you can't, you know, you can't put a fence. That's that's doesn't make any sense. So.
Let me ask you this. Are the three trees drawn on this site plan exactly where they are on the property?
I can't say that they're exactly where.
Because we could do, you could do a tree survey also and locate them exactly.
If it makes a difference, I would do it. But, you know, I mean, you guys have spent a lot of time, and I appreciate it. And it sounds, it's me like for, you know, whatever reason, we're not getting there. And you know, and you know, and that's why. Yeah, so.
Well, you know, we'd like to see you build a house. And as Mark had alluded to before, you know, we're looking at the ordinance. And to us, when we're looking at the zoning, there's room to move the house back to fit within the zoning setbacks. And you know, we'd like to see you move forward. And if it means getting a little bit more information with tree surveys and kind of seeing how you might turn the tree, kind of finagle, rotate, move the house to fit within, you know, we'd certainly like to see you do that.
So if you got more detailed with this site plan and knew exactly where the trees were and had your builder play with the house, like I'm saying, you should be able to get to a point where you don't even need to see us again.
Need a variance.
For a variance.
Yeah, no, I know. That's what we, that's what you said last time. And I went and we took it, we staked out where it would need to be and whatnot. And like I said, that just, that was too close. So you know, I mean, you asked a question, are these trees, you know, where they are exactly? I'm I'm not sure. I can't say that. And I can go, you know, do that. But did we stake it out exactly where it'd be? Yes, we did. And it was just too close to Simon Trail in order to the trees. So that helps. I could do that, but I don't know that that's going to make a difference if you know, if if we actually cite them and cite, you know, cite the house and come back with that. Because it doesn't, I mean, I would imagine you'd say make the house smaller. I mean, that's, in other words, I guess I'm trying to save all of us time, so.
Yeah, I have a question. This is Dave Schultz for Mr. Levy. Mr. Levy, is there such a thought that would it help with your backyard safety issue if the house was completely turned around and you'd enter the house from Simon instead of Borchers Beach Road? Would that benefit your situation at all?
It'd give you a bigger backyard.
Well, that's why I was just trying to think if you're, if safety is an issue, which I I fully understand that, if that would help your backyard situation, would that be anything that the builder would consider is, or you would consider to turn the house completely around and come the other way?
Well, you wouldn't have a Borchers Street, Borchers Road address. You'd have a Simon Trail address.
Yeah, why would that be a problem?
It would also have the back of the house facing south southeast, which is better sunlight for the living room and the rooms in the back. Well, just a thought.
Just a thought. I mean, you wouldn't have to change. I was otherwise, I was going to say, can you, you know, like you say, shrink the house or change the floor plan, but maybe just spinning this thing completely around, face the other way.
So again, the intention was to try to keep the, you know, the similarity to what was there before, which again is why, you know, I thought this could work, so.
Sure. To me, it almost looks like Simon Trail might be less traveled than Borchers Beach Road.
And either one of them are that much.
That's correct.
Unless they put a highway highway there. So, okay, you know what? You guys have been terrific. Thank you for your time. I think, you know, I, here's what I would appreciate. I'd appreciate a vote. You know, probably the only option would be for me to tear down those trees and then try to look for some mature trees that might because there is actually some room to move trees towards the back of a lot. Because I know as I have them there, it looks like that one tree is right up to the lot line, but there's, there's, there's room there. Maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's the solution. But, you know, I would, you know, prior to doing that, I would appreciate a vote.
Sure. Mr. Levy, I just wanted to tell you from my experience, I just did a renovation on my home. And some of the things that feel like setbacks is not that kind of setback, but like a backward step. Sometimes the solution is even better than you imagined. So hopefully that's true for you.
Were there any other questions for Mr. Levy? If there isn't, I mean, do I need to close that part of the of the discussion, Mark, and then bring it as a board?
No, it's your, you've you've not been in a hearing or anything, just you can proceed as you as you were.
Okay. Well, with that, I mean, are there any other discussion points between board members?
Well, you know, if we.
Board now talking?
Yes, just the board now talking.
This, you know, this, when I drove around there, I was surprised at how big this island is that this house and the and the only other house on it are, it's it's huge. It's, you could put, you know, six houses in between the two. I I don't know. I quite honestly, like I was saying earlier, if the 20 foot setback to Simon Trail is to the lot line and Simon Trail is another 22 feet from there. So even if you move the house that's on the site plan now, back 12 feet, it'd be 50 feet from Simon Trail. 50 feet to me is not stepping out of the backyard, back door into the street. I and I, you know, I I fully understand concern for children and stuff, but you know, there's a limit.
I, you know, Mark, I agree with you. And also sacrificing those three trees may be really his best option. And I know that his neighbors may object to that. However, okay, he's within the zoning rules. So they really have not no objections to him being able to build the house and wherever he wants it, and then put whatever landscaping he wants to put in. And then put whatever landscaping he wants to put in.
Well, looking at the lot, I'm not even sure he'd have to lose all three trees.
He may not.
Maybe just the one closest.
Right, well, then.
Come in handy.
Right.
I mean, there's no, there isn't any ordinance restricting cutting down those trees.
No.
No.
So that's just, I mean, if, if you want the house the way you want it. Then you may have to sacrifice the trees to get it. And then no one can say anything, object to it because you're within the zoning rules.
And these are not the only mature trees on the lot. This isn't like. Everything's bare except for those three trees.
Right.
It's an island. It's got lots of vegetation on it.
Yeah, I, I would agree with what both of you are saying, you know, because I look at the lot and I understand what he's saying about safety in the backyard. Uh, and, and other parcels in the area, but some of those other parcels, say geographic. Constraints that required like only one solution. I think here there's still a number of solutions that could. Accommodate what he wants on that lot. So is there any other discussion? About this? Before we vote?
I, I'd like to ask one, one question to Mark. If we, if we deny the variance, what are the implications for him? Ever coming back to request another variance on this lot?
If he has a material change to his application. You know, different circumstances, we, we would schedule a new hearing and, and. You know, if you're denying, I mean, what's before you is the specific variance request that was in the hearing notice.
Right.
Right. Which actually, I hope, I don't even remember what's in your packet. So that would be. You know, that you'd be voting on that and, and that would go away. But if he, in a year or two, wanted to do something different or had a different request in the meantime. You know, that would just be a new hearing process.
Okay.
Okay. I do, so do. Do we have a motion on this agenda item?
I'll make a man try to deny the variance. Okay.
Is that John?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mark would second that. And then. Anything else that anybody would like to add before we take a poll? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So the motion does not carry, but that doesn't preclude Mr. Levy from coming back with changes at a later time.
For the record, Paul, the motion passed. It passed five to zero and the motion was to deny. So it did pass.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, to deny.
Right. I need to leave for another meeting.
As do I. Sorry, I have to get City Hall.
Same meeting. Well, then is there a motion? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a.
And a second. Second, all in, all in favor?
Goodbye.
Motion adjourned.
Where it is.
Thank you.